Welcome everybody, joining right now. Get started shortly. Great, great. Yeah, so welcome everybody. My name is John Fagan and I'll be hosting you today along with my colleagues here Evan Parry. Well, he's a Scribe expert and Hannah Driver who's a senior accountant. So we're just going to test the chat. So just do a shout out on the chat when the Covid is fully over. Pandemic is a lot more safer, well it never be fully over. What country would you love to go on holiday? What's your favourite country? If you want to drop that into the chat right now and we'll get an idea of all the kind of great places you'd love to go on holiday when you fully feel safe. Maybe it'll be UK, it'd be good to see your results there. If the chat is annoying you during the event, because we get a lot of people complaining about that. If it pops up, just close it down and don't click on it when it pops up a little bit of message here. If you click it on there, it'll pop up again in a big window. Just close it down and ignore it if it is chatting you. Some people say it gets in the way of the presentation. So we've got some good, oh Mexico, I haven't been there. South America would be awesome. USA, yeah, a lot of America. Oh Namibia. Nice, nice one. I used to live in Namibia for a few years. I love Namibia. So we're also going to run a poll here, just to get an understanding of the current counting challenges you are having. Barbados, yes, I'd love to go there too. Yes, I'm going to launch this poll. Feel free to read it and answer it. It's just to get an understanding of the challenges you may face with accounting and that will feed into the kind of the main webinar we're doing today. So I'll hit that off and feel free to answer that. So for the next 30 minutes, Hannah is going to teach you everything that she knows about mastering year end. That should last you about 30 minutes and then I'll be handing over to Evan, who's going to show some practical, you know, because Hannah's going to use a lot of slides. And Evan's going to show you some practical examples of the things that she spoke about in our application Scribe. But I promise you, this is not a sales pitch. These kind of events are a bit of a hobby for us. We do have our very specific training on Scribe. So if you are a Scribe customer, you would focus on, you'd go to our Scribe only training sessions. But yeah, Evan will walk through that. Does that sound good to all of you? Put a yes in the comments. Or not. Good, good, good. So we've got some yeses there. So I'd like to introduce you to Hannah. She's our head accountant. She's been with us for over five years. She's literally been with the company from the beginning. So she's one of the longest serving members from basically when we had one customer or now web applications over to over 750 customers now. So she's been through the growth of the company. She's been training and supporting small and large councils across England as well. She has had to deal with all kinds of queries, questions and everything. So she's basically heard everything. She's also our product manager for our Scribe accounts. So she's a very, very busy lady, only works three days a week, but is super efficient. So it's good that we've got her today. So I'm going to hand over, while I look at the result, now let the poll continue to run and I'll hand over to you Hannah.
Thanks, John. Hi, everybody. Just found my screen. There we go. There we are, everyone. So yes, as we said then, so today's session is on the secret to mastering the year end at town and parish councils. Four sections for today. First is thinking about preparing for the year end. So things we can be doing now to get ready. So first March and beyond and having to prepare that AIGA. Then looking at the AIGA itself, different elements within that. What to do once the AIGA is completed, what you do with regards to publishing it, et cetera. And then a little bit at the end, just thinking about the new financial year. So it's all bogged down in the current financial year at the moment, but also being aware of the new financial year rapidly approaching as well. Okay, so firstly then, preparing for the year end. So I think important to say that obviously quite a lot of work involved in completing the AIGA over and above the normal monthly regimes that you'll be running. So firstly, it's important to expect that additional workload, be prepared for that. Understand that there's going to be additional work to do. And if you can factor that into your schedule, so rather than sort of finding a little bit of time here and there, put some specific time aside that you're going to be able to dedicate to completing the AIGA. And also maybe in between now and the end of March as well, put a bit of time aside. Do I need to do some preparation for the end of the year? Do I need to get my cashbook up to date? What can I do now to be in a better position once we get to the 1st of April and thinking about doing all the year end stuff? So as I alluded to there, up to date and accurate data is key. If you come on any of our sessions, we're always talking about, please, please, please make sure your cashbook's up to date. Get your data on, get it on, make sure it's accurate. Complete your monthly bank reconciliations as well. So get them up to date. If you've got a pile of invoices in the corner that you haven't put on your cashbook, or you've got some statements and you haven't reconciled them, please, please do that and do that. Maybe put some time aside to do that between now and the end of March. If you've got a bank reconciliation error that just won't go away, please also that you just can't get rid of, look for that now. Because if you haven't got a bank reconciliation balancing at that point, then you won't be able to proceed with the rest of the year end. Okay, and also then, if you're possible, thinking about your back return as well. Obviously, if you're back registered, it's likely that your quarter four will end on the 31st of March. I know sometimes it straddles the year end, which is quite annoying. But if it does, then obviously you're going to need to do your quarter four return anyway. But if you just claim it back, think about your Form 126. Can you be doing some work for that now? Thinking about the VAT entries on your cashbook. Have you got the appropriate paperwork for VAT numbers? Have you got the details of the VAT numbers? What could you be doing now in order to get ready for it? Obviously, you don't have to submit a VAT claim as of the 31st of March. But we would recommend that you do that because it just keeps things nice and neat when relying with the year end. Sorry, also think about the accounting approach you're going to need to take as well. So that was one of the questions that we've just had on. It seems to catch quite a lot of people out. Often when we talk to people and say, what accounting approach do you use? They don't always know, they're not sure what they use. They might know what they're doing, but they don't know what it's called, or they know the approach they're meant to be using, but they don't really know what that means. So that is obviously really significant for the year end as well. So you've got two approaches, receipts and payments for income and expenditure. Receipts and payments is a fairly simple form of accounting in that you literally record what happens when it happens. So you make a payment, it goes in your cashbook the day that you make that payment, you receive some money, you log on the cashbook on that day that you received that money. So it's fairly easy, simple approach. You're not thinking about the time at which it relates to, you're thinking about the times which actually took place. Okay. The difference there to income and expenditure is about the timing of it. When does it actually relate to? Now, most of the time, your cashbook will be in a receipts and payments basis. So you'll work on receipts and payments basis throughout the year. And then if you need to or you want to, you'll convert income and expenditure at the year end. Okay, so that's thinking about what has actually happened that is relevant to this year and therefore I need to adjust for. Do I have invoices that I owe that relate to this year? Have I paid for things up ahead, et cetera? So we'll talk about that in a little more detail. But it's quite important to understand what approach you're going to use, particularly if you are moving approaches. Or maybe you've done a year end at one council and now you've moved to a different one who has a different approach of being clear on what it means. Which approach are we using? What do I understand what that means? So if you're under £200,000, so the threshold is that you would work in receipts and payments for the year. If you're above £200,000, but that's for three consecutive years, you would need to work in income expenditure. So you may have a scenario where you've gone above the threshold for one or two years because you've got a large project and you've paid out a lot, you've had a large grant coming. But if that doesn't continue for the three consecutive years, you wouldn't necessarily need to move to income expenditure. Having said of that, you can opt into if you want to. And that's often the case where you have councils that have clerks or councillors who are quite financially minded. They may decide to use income expenditure. So make sure you kind of understand that approach, particularly as I said, if you've moved to a different council or maybe your council needs to or has chosen to move between those approaches. If you have moved between approaches, do be aware that you will need to restate the prior year. So when we look at the AIGA in a little bit in the accounting statement section, you'll have the current year and the prior year. Both years need to use the same approach. If you've moved between from one to the other, you'll need to restate the previous year so that they're using the same approach. Okay, so do be aware of that as well. Also thinking about your instructions from the auditor as well and what you need to do. So again, you may be in a scenario where your audit requirements are different. If you may or you might not have done a year end before, this might be your first year end. So again, it's really important to understand what do I actually need to do? What do I need to complete? What level of audit will be required? So for example, if you're a smaller council and you're under the 25K threshold, you may be able to exempt yourself from audits. You need to be clear, what does that mean? Actually, you still need to do the AIGA, you're just not going to send it off. So it's understanding what am I going to do? What process does it involve? What am I going to do with the AIGA once I've completed it? Also, it's really important to get yourself a copy of the Daypad Practitioner's Guide if you don't have one already. Because that supports the preparation of the AIGA. That's really important. It talks about all the relevant sections, how to complete them, things to consider. So do make sure you've got that sort of your bible beside you as you're thinking about any of those sections. Anything that you're not sure about is likely that the JPAD Practitioner's Guide will be able to help you with. And hopefully you can drop a link into the chat with that of anyone who wants it as well if they need it. And as I've mentioned there about restating, so you will need to restate if you've moved approaches, but also be thinking about, do I need to restate because of another reason? It might be that your auditor last year picked up a problem. If they've come back and said, this was an error, you need to restate these boxes. Obviously, make sure you do that. Or you may be that you're a new clerk and you counsel and you found an error. That happens quite a lot. People come and join us at Scribe and they're a new clerk enrolled. And when we're trying to put the opening balances into the system, there's problems, things crop up, that things maybe haven't done correctly and there's requirements for restatement. So be aware of those things. And if you do need to restate, obviously that's something that you can be doing now. You don't need to wait to the end of March for that. Because you can go and correct your figures from last year so that you're completely confident that your opening balance for this year is where you need to be. Okay, and we'll talk about all the boxes, et cetera, in a little while. Okay, then moving on to the actual AIGA itself now. This is what we're working towards. So the AIGA for any of you who are new to this, maybe haven't done one before, that's the annual governance and accountability return. And it's for the year end period, the 1st of April to the 31st of March. Made up of three sections, the internal audit report, section one, the annual governance statement, and section two, the accounting statements, which is the numbers bit. So I have a little look at the first two sections briefly now, but we've got some really good sessions coming up from the internal audit separately in the next weeks, months. So do look out for them because that goes into a lot more detail about the internal audit. And what I want to concentrate a little bit more on today is the numbers part of the accounting statements. So the internal audit report, then that's going to be the summarised conclusions from your internal audit coming in and reviewing everything. They're going to consider the adequacy and effectiveness of your council's procedures and your controls. So this is such as the way you calculated the preset, where you maintain the asset register, all those controls and procedures that you've got going on. So in many ways, this isn't going to be additional work because it's a review of the things that you should have in place, if they are procedures, controls, et cetera. Are they taking place? Obviously, there's going to be some work involved in you collecting the information that the internal auditor requests. But it should be a review of the things that you are doing. Are you doing them efficiently, effectively, going in line with your controls and your procedures? So carried out at least annually, but the scope and extent will depend on the council size and circumstance. So obviously you're bigger, if you've got a bit more going on, if you've got quite a lot of different elements within the council, you may find it more relevant to have a more regular or more in-depth internal audit. But the very least, it should be a report appropriate to give you the answers to these questions. So this is the thing taken directly from the AIGA that they will be reviewing in order to be able to give yes, no answers to these comments in here. And that's what you're going to use as the basis to complete this. You'll need your internal audit report in order to complete this section of the AIGA. Linked quite heavily with that is section one, which is the annual governance statement. Again, this is a yes, no tick box against certain statements. And here to review the effectiveness of the system of the internal controls. So if we move on again, you can see this is coming directly from the AIGA. Again, it's certain statements about the procedure and things that you carry out. Are you able to say yes, hopefully, to these elements? If you do say yes, then you need to have the appropriate evidence supporting information that yes, you do that. You don't need to provide it to the auditor. But if there was ever a question or a review of that, that you've got those things in place that can prove that yes, these arrangements are happening. If you're not able to say yes, and therefore you know there's an issue, there's a weakness, there's a problem, you'd have to give a no answer here. But you then have to provide some additional information to the auditor to explain what the weaknesses were, what the issues were, how they're going to be addressed going forward to stop that from happening and moving from that. This is quite heavily interlinked, as I said, with the internal audit. Statements two and six are related to that. So six is particularly that you've had that internal audit to come in. So if you arrange your internal audit, then you've instantly got a yes in book six because you've arranged that and that's happening. So again, it's a review of the things that you hopefully are doing anyway. And it's a yes, no answer at this point, just to confirm whether or not those things are in place. Moving on then to section two, the accounting statement. So that's the numbers bit. This is the bit more work's involved. Because at this point, you're going to need to collate the information in your cashbook in order to fill all this in. Okay, so all the information that you've got in, and that's why obviously it's so important to get all the data in, make sure it's accurate. Get that bank reconciliation balancing so that you know at the point at which you come to complete this, that everything that you need in your cashbook is in there, it's accurate. So in a moment, I want to talk about each of these boxes on this form and some things to be aware of. So this is taken from last year. Because at the moment, there isn't the latest version. But obviously, what we're going to be having is March 22. And then the current year of last year becomes your prior year. So thinking about that in there. Firstly though, I want to go back to what we were talking about with regards to receipts and payments and income expenditure. And just thinking about, once obviously you know which approach you're going to be using, what does that actually mean for when I'm going to be completing my accounting statements? So as we said, then receipts and payments is fairly simple because you're just recording what happens when it happens. That means that for completing the accounting statements, it's fairly straightforward because you're going to take your figures directly from the cashbook. You don't need to do any additional work. Once those figures are in, they're collated, they're totaled, you're going to be taking directly from the cashbook and putting them in. Obviously, you're going to have to split them out over the relevant boxes, but it's fairly simple that the total of your cashbook position is going to be the total that relate to the AIGA itself. Income and expenditure, and as we said, a little bit more work to do because you're going to have to convert most likely from receipts and payments to income expenditure. And that's what the JPAD Practitioner's Guide expects would happen, that you'd work in a receipts and payments basis and then you'll convert to income expenditure. So there's some elements to consider when you're needing to do that. The first thing is that you exclude VAT from your totals. So whereas receipts and payments, you literally just take your total from the cashbook. That includes that at the point which it's happened and you put it in the boxes. Income expenditure, you need to exclude the VAT because at the year end point, it will constitute a debtor or a creditor. Did you owe some VAT to H M R C, what's the rate to you? And that's going to constitute a difference between your book seven and your book eight that we'll look at in a moment. You also need to add some adjustments in. And this is back to the timing that we were talking about. So this is where you're going to be considering what are the relevant things that have happened, that we haven't taken account or haven't paid for. So have we had some invoices in dated in March or some work done in March? But we know we're not going to pay for that until April or beyond because of our process of agreeing payments and making payments is not going to happen. Therefore, we need to put them through as adjustments for our creditors, people that we owe, that we know we owe, we've had some work done. So in that scenario, we need to put some more cost into our figures because we should have paid for them and that relates to this current year. You may also have debtors. So if you've sent invoices out, provided services to your customers, they haven't paid you, that would constitute a debtor. It's relevant this year and you need to identify them. On the flip side of that, you may have paid for things up ahead. So you may have prepaid items. If you've paid for some building work already, but it's been delayed, it's not going to happen to the new financial year. You'd need to remove that cost from your accounts because it's not relevant to this year. It's not taking place in this current financial year. Or if you've had some money in from the customer, they've already paid you up ahead to hire out your hall, but they're not going to actually have that hire till the summertime for their party, whatever it may be, you would need to remove anything that you've received ahead of the way you haven't provided the service. Because again, you're thinking about the timings, when does it actually relate to? So it may be a case of going through the invoices that you've had in and identifying what's happened, what have you not paid for, what is relevant to this year. Thinking about invoices that you've raised, that you haven't yet received payment for. And anything else that's relevant to moving around in terms of the timings and the relation to this current financial year itself. When you're doing that, there's a couple of things to consider as well. So I've put there about considering the materiality and the regularity. So firstly, the value of it. Are you going to have a cut-off limit? Are you going to say, well, we're not going to put any adjustments through for anything under £50, £100? Be consistent about that. If that's what you did last year, do the same. You don't want to necessarily be scrabbling about for the pounds and pence of everything. Set a limit and be clear about that. Also consider the regularity. So if you pay somebody, your grounds maintenance people every single month, but you've always paid them in arrears, you don't necessarily need to think about March needs adjusting for because I'm not going to pay it to April. If that was the same situation at the start of the year and you've got 12 months' worth of invoices in, it doesn't matter if the timings are slightly out in relationship to the actual months, do they relate? The only point to consider there is if you did have, they did do some work over and above for March, maybe they always charged you £1,000, but there was an additional fee because they cut down the tree, whatever it may be, you may want to put an adjustment in for that because that's outside their normal monthly amount that you charge that would be in your accounts as normal. So consider some of those things. You don't want to make loads of work for yourself accruing everything that happens monthly, your phone bill, your broadband. Because if it's a monthly but fee, you've already got 12 months' worth in there. And also make sure last year's adjustments are reversed. Obviously, that's quite an important thing, that they'll come out, be replaced with what's actually happened, plus any additional adjustments. If you've got software, then I will almost certainly do it for you. But if you're using Excel, make sure that you've adjusted for those last year's adjustments as well. So then we can think about the boxes themselves. And just some pointers when you're completing each of those boxes to think about. So box one is our balance book forward. It sounds fairly straightforward, but obviously make sure it's equal to box seven of the previous year. Make sure that your starting position is your closing position for last year. Particularly if you've had a few different variations of your form for last year and then things got changed, or particularly if you've needed to restate. Very important obviously to make sure that box one is actually your box seven of last year. Box two then says precepts or rates or levies. So for councils, it's just your precepts. So don't recall out when you're mentioning rates or levies. That prefers just a drainage board, so you need to put silver money in there or anything like that. And also be mindful that you receive your precept from your district council with any other payments, accounts attached to them, support, et cetera. Make sure you split that out so it's purely just the precept into books two. And then moving on to books three then, total of other receipts. So that'll be everything else that you've received other than the precept. Making sure not to include any movements of money. So if you've had bank transfers and you've recorded them as ins and outs in different accounts, make sure they're not included in your total receipts because it's just movements of money within the council. It's not a true receipt. I've put there exclude VAT if working in income expenditure. So be mindful of that for all the relevant boxes. Receipts and payments should just put the total in. And also be aware as well that if you have a credit note refund, overpayment back from a supplier, it is not a receipt entry. It's a correction of an overpayment. So it needs to be entered on your system or cashbook as a negative payment entry. So make sure you haven't got any refunds, credit notes, et cetera in your box three because it's not a true receipt. It's just a correction, something that's owed previously. Moving on then, box four is your staff costs. So make sure you're clear on the guidance as to what to be included because that changed a couple of years ago, just for your core staff costs, salary, pension and I, et cetera, not other things such as mileage, other allowances, et cetera. So they are not box four. But hopefully you're all clear on that because that did change. But make sure they are the only things that are going into box four. Box five is your loan interest or capital repayments. So obviously, that's fairly straightforward. Recall it separately from other payments and the loan interest that you've made payable. And box six, all other payments. So that's everything else other than your staff costs and other than your loan interest. Again, on the flip side of that, don't include any bank transfers, movements of money. And make sure if you have had a refund from a supplier, it goes into other payments. And obviously, the flip side of that, if you've had a customer who's paid you to hire out the hall and it's a council and you've paid them the money back, it's not a payment, it's a negative receipt. So be clear about the difference about if you have to give money back to people. It's because you're refunding a receipt that they've already received from them. It's not a separate payment. So be mindful of that. Otherwise, you run the risk of overstating your boxes three and six of receipts and your payments. Moving on to box seven then, so that's going to be your sum total of all the boxes that we've just talked about. So boxes one, your opening balances plus your income of precept and other receipts. Less your payments out of your boxes four, five and six, staff costs, loan repayments, other payments. Obviously, make sure that it adds up, that you've got all that incorrectly and you total it correctly. So box eight is your total value of cash and short-term investments. That's basically your bank reconciliation position. So that's why it's so obviously so important to have a starting point of a balancing bank rec at the start of the position. Because then that means you know your cashbook's correct and the figures that you take from your cashbook to fill in these other boxes will therefore collate back to your box eight. If you are working in receipts and payments, it's a really nice check because box seven and box eight will be the same figure. Box eight will be your bank rec position and box seven will be the same figure because it's just a breakdown of how you got to that based on the boxes that we've just talked about. Okay, if you're working in income expenditure, boxes seven and eight will be different. Box eight will be your bank rec position. But box seven won't be the same because of these adjusting items that you've identified. Box seven is basically what my bank account would have been had all of these things happened. If I'd have paid those invoices that I owed, if I'd had that money in from those debtors, this is what it would have been. Okay, so be clear on the difference. If your receipts and payments, box seven and eight must be the same. If your income expenditure, almost certainly boxes seven, eight will be different. It's a possibility that they could be the same if you had to, no adjustments and your balance was completely up to date. But it's unlikely. Then moving on then, box nine is your fixed assets and your long-term investments. So this is something else that you could think about doing now in terms of your asset register. So if you had any additional assets this year, disposed of anything, you could look to update your asset register and readiness for box nine. You need to make sure you're consistent in your reporting of the total. So most of the time, you'll likely be using your purchase cost, the acquisition value to populate box nine. But if you have changed that and you've moved to the current value, for example, obviously make sure you're consistent with that approach. And if you've moved in this year itself, you'd need to restate to have the same approach in both years. Okay. Make sure your asset register got all the relevant information. So in the same way that you'll be checking your cashbook is up to date and accurate, make sure your asset register is the same. And ignore depreciation. We've had a few questions about people, particularly when they've come from a commercial accounts background and they recognise depreciation against fixed assets. That's not relevant here. It's purely just the cost of it, the cost you to buy it and that's what it's in. And if you dispose of it, it comes off the register and the cost goes into the payments when you buy it. And if you sell it for anything, it's simply a box three receipt. So be clear about that. There's no depreciation. Lastly then, box 10 is your borrowings. And that is the amount that you owe. If you've got any loans likely from Public Works Loan Board. And it just needs to be the updated figure to the amount that you owed as of the 31st of March. Okay, so again, just some work to update that. Particularly obviously if you've made some repayments within the year itself. So that's all the boxes that we're going to go through. So then thinking about those things and then other documents alongside that to consider. Your bank rec, as we talked about, really important. I'd always make sure your bank reconciliation balances first before you start the rest of it. Because if it doesn't, you're going to have a problem. As we said, it's going to agree to box eight. You're going to have your reconciliation between box seven and eight if you're in income expenditure, as we mentioned. So that's going to be the summary of the debtors and creditor entries that you've put in, including your VAT debtor or creditor to balance out what the difference is between box seven and box eight. You need to be clear and list that as well. And you're also going to need to explain any variances. So you need to compare the current year, which the year you're going to complete of 31st of March 22 to last year's figures and any variances over 15% for your boxes two, three, four, five, six, nine and 10, you'd need to explain. So what's happened? Why are we above this variance? And also if box seven is more than twice box two. So box seven is your total funds position. Box two is your total precept. So in this scenario, it's basically saying that you are holding quite a significant amount of money as funds. More than twice your precept, which normally, excuse me, you wouldn't do unless you have significant reserves. Obviously, if you've got reserves, that's absolutely fine. And you'll have a general reserve that will cover your running costs that's normally between three to 12 months equivalent, which is absolutely fine. Anything other than that will be your specifically earmarked capital reserves that you can hold. There's no limit to the size of those reserves that you hold. Obviously, if you're going to build a community centre, it's going to be pretty big. And then therefore you may well have your box seven is more than twice box two. And that's fine if you can explain that, just by that, give all the reasons. But obviously, if you've just got a lot of money in the bank and you don't really know what's going to happen with it, that's an issue and you need to address that. That's quite significant. Whatever variances or differences you need to explain, make sure you give full numerical explanations. Details of everything. It's not just appropriate to say, I hired out the hall a bit more this year than I did last year because Covid. You need to be quite specific. Give numbers, give differences, breakdowns of the information. Otherwise, you're going to get the auditor coming back and wanting more from you. So be very, very clear about it. It may also be a good idea, something you could think about doing now. If you know you spent some money somewhere, where you've received a bit more, make some notes on those things. When you come to this point and you identify those variances, you can look back at the notes and go, oh yeah, that's because we've made a large purchase and we've had this big grant or some start. That's because we've made a large purchase and we've had this big grant or some starting point as to why those differences are. Okay, that takes us through the A G A. Now we can think quickly briefly about what do we do once we've got A G A completed in terms of signing it off. And publishing it, et cetera. So once those accounting statements are done, the R F O is going to sign them off and then you can have your meeting. And you're going to receive a note and approval, these elements, so these different elements of the A G A itself, internal audit report, the undergovernance statement, the accounting statements. If it turns out that you can um exempt yourself from the audit, so you're under the twenty five thousand pound threshold. There are some other criteria to do check them if you're not sure. And you can do that, you can approve that. And then you're signing the rest of it off as relevant, okay? Then that enables the R F O to set the commencement date for the exercise of public rights. So the accounting records that you created must be available to view by any interested person. Anyone who wants to see them can do so and electors can also raise questions or make objections to them. But you must have approved and published it before this inspection period starts. You need to have that meeting to do that process. And then you can set that, that must be a period of thirty working days, in case anyone wants to review that. And then you can think about what you need to send to the external auditor. So as we said, if you're exempt from audit, you'll just send off the certificate with exemption. I've heard of a few confusion where people say everything, but no, they just need the certificate itself. If you're not exempt, then you're also going to send all the relevant parts of it. So A G A itself or the associated documents that we've just talked about. And the details of your exercise of public rights and any other information. So if there's anything else that you've done that you need to restate, or you've had some issues with this thing, let know to some of that. Any other information that you need to provide, you would send off to them. And then you can think about actually publishing your documents. So if you're exempt from audit. You can put it all on there. So that's your A G A itself is the top bit, the associated documents, the arrangement for your rights and public rights. And then your details of your public, your external auditor. If you're not exempt, you would publish these items here, but you'd also need to declare that the accounts as yet un-audited. And give those details until the point at which you receive it back from the external auditor. And then you would be able to update with those additional bits of information.
One second, Hannah, I'm just gonna go to the poll and you can have a drink of water while we're doing that, no worries. So we've been running this poll. I'm going to end it very shortly. We're asking what are your council principles? What are the accounting principles that you find most challenging? So it's your last chance to do that. Um while you're doing that, um we will be sending out the presentation to all of you by email, recording of this. And any links we've shared. So let's just end that poll right now and I'll share the results with all of you. And yeah, as you can see there, uh the biggest challenges people do face is around reserves. Um look, yeah, so that's similar to when we previously run run the poll. And we've also never had geniuses. So we've got our first two geniuses in the in the group. So I'll stop sharing that and then I will go back to you, Hannah.
Thanks, John. I think I hope I'm marking now. Yeah, so just to finish that last little bit off then, that you'll have your, once you've got your audit back from external auditor. You then be able to publish those last bits, which is going to be the conclusion of audit back from them, basically. Signing off and including any amendments and then their certificate they provided to you, okay? So that will take place and you need to have done that by the end of September. And just to finish off then, as we said, the last little section that I wanted to talk about was just looking ahead to the new financial year. So obviously, in the moment, we're all in sort of the midst of thinking about the current financial year. At the back, so just before Christmas, we were thinking about the budget for the new financial year. So kind of sort of all moving around, thinking about next year. Now we're back in the in the thick of thinking about the current financial year, but just some pointers to looking ahead for the new financial year. Obviously, you can do some work now if you want to in terms of setting up the cashbook for the new financial year. Because it may well be that you'll need to run that alongside the current financial year. Some people I talked to like to finish off the current year and then they'll start their cashbook for the new year. But obviously, if time goes on, you're a bigger council, that might, that will simply won't be possible. So if you can do some work now to be ahead to your cashbook's ready for you from the first of April, that's great. It may be a point at this point as well that you can think about that cashbook, particularly as you're trying to collate the information at this point. Is there issues? Do there things you need to address? Is it fit for purpose? Have I had enough training on it? Does it suit the needs of my council? How could I improve it? It might be that it was brilliant ten years ago, but it's never having changes. Some Excel always set it up, but I don't know how to change it. I'm, you know, sales are locked up. What do I do with it? Is there things that you could be doing and thinking about and changing now? It might be considering a change of medium or the coding structure that you're using. So some things to think about with regards to the cashbook in terms of how to structure it. I suggest that you base it on your council budget or preset breakdown. Now, it sounds quite strange because it's surprising how many people's cashbooks that I've seen that they're no resemblance to their budget. So they have a nice budget sheet with all their budget lines in it, breakdown of the budget against it. And then they have a cashbook that has none none of that information in it. So then if you wanted to look at what have I actually spent against this budget line? It can't be collated easily. It's not an easy report they can produce and it's very hard to analyse that information. So think about the budget breakdown that you're using. Use those codes. Allocate your payments and receipts out to those budget codes. And also think about grouping codes together if you're going to require reporting on them. So if someone's going to say to you, how much have we spent on the village hall? How much have we had in hiring? We had to provide that information. Do you, that's the sort of thing that you need to be able to provide. And could it be improved upon? So it might be that you need additional codes as we talked about. So if you group everything into open spaces. Actually, you could really do with knowing what we spent on grass cutting, hedges, trees, play park, whatever it may be, split it out. Analyse it further. Or is it too detailed? Have you got codes for every single thing and actually you get to the end of the year and some of them you barely use? Do they just want taking out the cashbook, make it look a little bit simpler? Um less own risk to manage as well. And can you put more information into the cashbook? Do you, should you be recording your invoice numbers and details? So say if you happen to keep referring to your paperwork that relates to the cashbook. Can you put more information in it? So that's the hub of every bit of information that you need. So that's just some of the things to think about at this point. If you've got a little bit of time to get ahead so that next year, that when you're at this point collating information for the year end. It's actually a bit easier. There's some things to think about at that point. Okay, that's everything I wanted to go through today. Thank you for that. Sorry about my little cock in the middle there.
Yeah, you just, you just survived. Your voice just.
Just did it, so there we go.
Well done, Hannah. Thank you very much. Um yeah, so thanks, Hannah. Um so some of this may seem well overwhelming for a lot of you. We're here to help and we will be doing a question answer session very shortly. And just to be clear, those questions, if you are a current Scribe customer and you've got specific questions about using Scribe, we won't be answering those today. You can go to hello@scribeaccounts.com and get your support. And we have separate events about that. Um yeah, so we've seen a lot of slides there. So I'm going to hand over to Evan now. He's just going to show you some practical examples. He's going to be using Scribe to do that, but just to show how some of those kind of principles can play out if you are using uh software. So over to you, Evan.
Thank you, John. I'm going to share my screen with everyone so that you can see Scribe. I've got it loaded up in the background here. Hopefully you can now see, I'm I'm signed in to Scribe here. I've just gone on to our website and clicked sign in. It's very straightforward to get into Scribe. What I'm going to show you is a couple of bits that are quite relevant to what we've just obviously covered. So the year end process is obviously, you know, the the reason we're all here. It's really, really straightforward within Scribe. So really, the the kind of ethos of Scribe and and the the way that the system works is we know all of this stuff is really complicated, especially if you don't come from a financial background. If you're like me. All of that that Hannah just covered basically just crossed my eyes. I didn't really understand any of it. Scribe, the system does, and it can just do it all for you. So the year end process, if you're on receipts and payments, is as simple as just clicking annual return here within Scribe and then producing your section two of your A G A. So you can see here, we've got boxes one through ten all filled in already. Uh it's just produced instantly within Scribe. You can then share it straight over to your auditor. You can do your exclamation of variances report as well within Scribe. You can see here, Scribe knows when you need to provide that explanation and you can just type type that into into the boxes here. And then what you do is you produce your exclamation report, which looks like this. Um so it's very, very straightforward year end process if you're using Scribe. Obviously, you it is an accounting system. It's specifically designed for parish councils. So it's only as good as the data you put into it. You will need to add on your transactions throughout the year. And then just reconcile your bank uh each month. And from there, it's, everything's automated. Now, uh John obviously pointed out that in the uh in the poll there, it seemed like everyone was uh having a bit of problems with reserves. You can manage your reserve funds within Scribe. So the 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 way that looks really is you can produce a reserve balance reports just at the click of a button, which shows you your reserve funds and and how they're being managed. So what we do is we separate capital and earmarked reserves. We have various different funds here. You can see I've got playground and and the car park resurface. We've got our opening balance for each fund, anything that's happened throughout the year with those pots of money, and then that current balance over on the right. I've just produced instantly. You can also produce your V A T return within Scribe. So this is the uh the V A T one to six form. That's how quickly you can produce it. So all of these things really are just to to kind of take the stress out of accounting for for councils. If you want to see any more, just throw a yes in the in the comments and what I'll do is I'll get in touch with you at another time and we can go over it in a little bit more detail. And before I go though, I did think it'd be relevant just to show everyone that we do have a free resource. It's completely free. It's called the uh the Council Clarks Mastermind Group on Facebook. Hopefully, everyone can see this. Um essentially what this is. It's a, it's a, just a group on Facebook for clerks and R F Os to share their experiences, ask questions, share information. Um it doesn't have to be about the accounts. It can really be about anything to do with local authorities. And you'll find that, you know, within our one thousand three hundred members, you'll definitely get a response from someone who's been there, done that and and has all the answers for you. Uh incidentally, we actually had a quite an interesting question yesterday from Sasha here. She's asked, um just for some opinions on Scribe as a as a business, you know, the the product that we provide. Whether or not it's it's going to be a a good option. You can see here, we had about forty eight comments coming back. We were absolutely overwhelmed with the the response. You can see we've had things like from Anne here saying that she'd highly recommend Scribe, Christina saying that uh the system just saves her hours, um you know, producing reports. So if you want to have a look at Scribe, please do get in touch with us and I'll be more than happy to show you a bit more. Uh John, you're on mute. You've pulled a classic there.
Major fail. We should never be doing that. We are webinar professionals. So I'll have to put some fine into the cookie jar for that one. Um so, but yeah, as well as the Clark's um Facebook group, we've also got a councillor's one. So again, we don't get involved in this. We just administer it. It's there for everybody to use. Another resource that might be useful to you is the uh year end checklist. I've just dropped some links there that you can go out down and uh download that. And then also, this is an uh offer that we're making to you guys. We've got five free slots available to you on this webinar to basically get set up with your A G A and you do your year end uh for 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 this financial year. So you're basically getting free professional services from the likes of Hannah, a qualified accountant that we have at the company to basically set you up. Uh do a one to one handover, set up uh the structure, add your bank accounts, restate your previous years. Import your data and get the data entry so that you're ready. So that is available to you guys. You can click on that link or you can say uh just yes and we'll get back to you. So other than that, we're going to now go over to the question and answers. So we've been having a few questions. I'm going to call uh call them out. And then if you're available, you can ask it. So Siobhan's been asking a few questions. Um Siobhan, are you there? You you you're, the floor is yours. You can ask questions otherwise.
I very much like clarity about the receipts and in receipts and payments and the income and expenditure, if I've got it the right way around. We're just over the um cutoff point for twenty five thousand and we're very small. So we're too small really to take out a subscription uh with the like subscribe, as much as I'd love it. Um but can you just explain which one I should be using when I picked up the um uh the post last year? So I've done one year end. Um on the cashbook, we had things for both.
Okay, but you you're hovering around about the twenty five thousand pound a year threshold, are you, you said?
We we are, we we get preset of about twenty eight.
Okay, so the income and expenditure threshold is two hundred thousand. So you're nowhere near that. So you're absolutely fine to be in receipts and payments. That's absolutely fine. And with regards to exempting yourself from the audit, you'd have to wait till you get to the year end. But if either your receipts or your payments total goes over twenty five thousand pounds, you wouldn't be able to exempt yourself.
No, okay.
Precept just over that, then that wouldn't be possible. But yeah, but you're fine to be in receipts and payments. If that's what you did last year, you can continue as you are.
Yeah, that's what I did. Thank you.
Yeah. Did you have more one? Um sorry.
Um yes, so we've got Sally's. I don't know if Sally's questions were specific to Scribe, but uh over to you, Sally, are you there? Um if it is very specific to details on Scribe, then we'll we'll support you on a different channel. But yeah, Sally.
No, it's 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 not for scribing.
Good, good. Yeah, far away.
Um yeah, the um I asked several questions and now I forgot.
Well, you've got a few. So you had, how do I show in receipts and payments that we have transferred money to a specific reserve? But it has stayed in the same bank account. That's one.
Okay, so that actually won't have any relevance to the or end of your actual accounting statements because that will still be in your pot of money. And when you report it, it'll just be a total. Obviously, it'd be a good idea to keep your separate records of all your reserves and your breakdown, but you don't need to have any details. And if you're just moving money around, it, that's that's kind of irrelevant. You're totally producing the box seven and eight is your total position. You may want to have that. And obviously, like I said, if it's if it's a significant amount that's above twice box two, you need to explain it as a separate issue. It's a separate explanation. But in terms of the actual A G A, you're just going to be reporting totals, your actual total fund that you've got.
So it goes in the budget but not in the other account?
For the actual end of the year, you're just thinking about the totals. But obviously, in terms of the budget separately to that, you can manage it and see what you've got in the pot to spend on things. But actually, in terms of that, you're just going to be reporting it as a total for the A G A itself.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Or did you have any others ones you want to? The uh the R M P item hasn't come through on the statement by thirty first of March. We should not include it in this year's accounts.
So that's actually a good thing to to think about in terms of um presented items versus creditors and debtors. So I think it's worth actually just for everybody. So if you have an unpresented item, that's where if you've sent out a cheque for payment to somebody or somebody paying, it hasn't gone into the bank account, so it's not appearing on the statement, that's an unpresented item and that's absolutely fine to be included. Because if you've recorded on your cashbook because you've sent that payment out, if your um supplier hasn't cashed that cheque, that's irrelevant. It's an unpresented item that you would include in your bank record and it would make up the total of box eight. So my box eight will be your bank statement plus or minus any unpresented items. But that is different to creditors and debtors where you haven't paid for it. So if you should have, if it related to March, but you're not paying to April. You'd put an adjustment in if you're income expenditure. But if you're receipts and payments, you ignore that. It's only accounting for the items that you've actually sent a payment off for. So this will be more relevant for those of you still using cheques. If it's obviously instant online banking, you're not going to have so many issues with unpresented item. If you still use cheques, be aware of, be aware of that sort of difference. And be aware of unpresented items where you've sent cheques off that haven't appeared on your bank statement.
Good. Thank you. Kate Dyer, are you there? Feel free to ask your question. You're on mute. You've, you need to put a penalty in the cookie jar as well.
Sorry about that. Uh no, I wasn't intended to. I only asked earlier on just to have it. Um what? Oh, yes. That was quite a while ago, yeah. Um I think it was, it was just the adjustments that I had concerns about. I hear the term accruals in my paperwork that I get through for and I don't actually, every year I have to think about and try and reteach myself what it actually is. So I was hoping you can give me a summary.
So most of the time it's been credited. There's a slight difference between a creditor and accrual. A creditor is somebody that you haven't, you know you owe them. You've had an invoice for them, but you're not going to be able to pay it to the new financial year. And accrual is where you know you're going to, but you don't know exactly necessarily how much. You might have had some work done, but you haven't yet received the invoice. But you know you've had some goods or services provided to you. So you're going to put an amount in, say, someone's come and done some work. I think I'm going to need to pay them five hundred pounds. That's my accrual. Someone else has done some work. They've invoiced me for a thousand pounds. That's a creditor because I've got that invoice and I know I need to pay it. Okay, so that's the slight difference. And then on the flip side of that, a debtor is somebody that owes you.
Absolutely. That adjustment for the accrual was done in the following financial year when you then get.
And you get to the end of this year, if you know there's some things you've not paid for, you'd add it into your current situation. So your box six, your other payments. You say, this is what I've actually paid, plus my creditors and then my accruals for the things I know I need to pay. And that's my total box six. When you get into the next financial year, you deduct them out, you'd reverse them because then you'd actually pay it. And then at the end of the next year, you'd put in any new adjustments for the end of the following year and then you just continue on like that forever.
Thank you very much. I always, I always thought, like you say, that they were the same as, but now that makes sense.
The principle's the same. What you do is in the same, but that's the slight, the slight difference there.
Ah, thank you.
No worries.
I also asked just very quickly, if you could recall the dates of the exercise of public rights, because I can't remember what they are. They moved them, didn't they?
Thirty working days that has to include, is it? Oh, anyone here who would like to?
I couldn't remember the day.
Yeah, this is slightly, that's because I need Jo, who's our um so qualified cop. I don't think she's on here today, but I.
Uh, Jo's on holiday.
Yeah, so she's, Jo would be perfect for that, but I don't think she's.
No worries. I look at, I was just cheating, so.
I'll ask it. I I'll ask it on the team chat uh right now and then maybe we'll get an answer.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
No problem.
Cool. Uh Mister Lewis, are you there? Did you get your question answered? Michael Lewis. I think it, okay, he's not there. Yes, I guess it was a, he saw the A G A form come up and said, where do we get the A G A from? And it's kind of, well, the answer is you have to produce it. Yeah.
Yeah, well, you'll have the form from the auditor. So I got that from the PKF Little John website. The current one isn't on there yet, but they should also send that communication to you directly to have that information. But you can go and have a look on your auditor website now um and say. And see that information. But at the moment, when I last looked on PKF, they hadn't got the updated one for this year. It's still last year, but this last.
Okay, cool. We'll we'll provide a link to that. Um. We're open now with that. So the questions in the chat, any other live questions? Feel free to drop in. Otherwise. Oh, we've got an answer. There must be a thirty working day period called the period for the exercise of public rights during which you can exercise your statutory right to inspect the accounting records. So we've got hands up from Simona.
I just a silly one. It's the first year that I'm doing A G A, so I'm not sure of the basic. Um. Do I need to have a kind of appointment letter with both the internal auditor and the external auditor? Or how does it work? Do I need to present the quote to the council and they need to approve both? Or the external auditor is a kind of already appointed?
Yes, you'll have your external to you. Yeah, you you can appoint. So you'd need to go out and find your internal auditor and that's fine to find somebody. But the external auditor to you will have it depending on where you are in the country, likely PKF, maybe somebody else. Yeah, PKF, yeah. So then they will just, yeah, you will have to have.
Do I need to inform them that I'm going to submit something that they should expect?
Uh, they'll just, they'll, they'll, everyone needs to send them something, either it's their certificate of exemption. Or you're just going to send a whole lot of lot to them. So they'll just have that from you.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Donna.
Yeah, is there a step to step, step by step guide on Scribe or somewhere about actually running the year end and what what you do first and then, you know, actually closing down the financial year? I've only been a clerk since the fourth of January, so I've been in finance before.
Absolutely. So there are, there's there's some checklist, there's some checklist and some guidance on there that you can read. Or we're also running some sessions a bit like this, but just for Scribe customers that you can sign up for and we go through the whole process. It'll likely be with me. And you can go through this whole process. So if you go on the Scribe Academy, which is where you likely signed up for this, there's all the dates of when they are. It's there's two. There's one called preparing for year end, which is all the things that you can do to make sure a scribe account is ready. And then there's one called. Completing your end, I think it is on Scribe, and that's how to do it itself.
Okay, I I think I'm on some, but I'm not sure that I've got completing year end. So, okay.
We get in, let's go down.
Thank you. Oh. Yeah, cool. All right. Any other questions? Um, oh, yeah, there we go. This, while you go there, go to scrub academy. Also. If there's no more questions, we're doing a few more of the, well, we're doing these events every month now. So we're doing education events that are based on theory and practice. Doesn't matter what system you're using, whether you're using paper, uh realtor, say, scribe, you're welcome along. I highly recommend. So I've got, I did a blog post on it. So we've done, we've done February now. Uh while we're in February, so we got uh. Julie um coming along, doing top ten uh compliance with symmetry. And then related to this, I highly recommend you come along to the happy year ending with Eleanor, the auditor. Um so she is an auditor. So it's kind of one last sanity check of the kind of any issues that you might uh have. Yeah, so highly recommend. I'll send these links through or Shelley will send follow up. She'll get an email from her later. But yeah, if there's no more questions, have a really good day. Um, yeah. And see you next time.